All right, good evening, everyone. The time is 7:11 PM. It is Monday, November 1st. I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would the City Secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Coach?
Here.
Ellison?
President.
Flores Cale?
Here.
Rizzo?
Present.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Tobias?
Here.
All right, all members present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes for city council special meeting and regular meeting for October 19th, 2021.
Second.
All right, let's move by Councilmember Tobias, seconded by Councilmember Flores Cale. Will we approve the minutes for October 19th? Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Next up, citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item, please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either the mayor or the city secretary. I do not have any comments forms in front of me. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments period. Next up, city manager report.
Mayor, Council Scott Sellers, city manager for the record. Make sure this is on. All right. Okay, first up on our city manager report tonight, we have Benito Pereira from our Parks Department talking about our October Halloween recap.
All right, good evening, mayor and council. Benito Pereira, Parks and Trails Maintenance Supervisor for the record. We would just like to thank everyone who attended the Center Street Trick or Treat event. It was a great event for all the families. We had a lot of fun out there. There was a recap video actually on the Parks and Rec Department Facebook page if you'd like to take a look at it. We are also adding all the contest winners so that you'll be able to see who won best costume, pet costume contest, the pumpkin decorating contest, and the yard decorating contest. And we also like to thank everybody that participated.
I think the city manager should have won that, by the way.
Go for it. And also, this Saturday, we have our Texas Arbor Day event from 9:00 to 12:00. We'll be planning to plant trees along Waterleaf Park and other parks remaining. It depends on the volunteers that come up. And we also like to get the word out to see who else would like to come out and give us a hand this Saturday. And the following weekend, next Saturday, we'll have our Veterans Day Parade in celebration. The parade begins at 12:00 noon from the VFW and will travel down Center Street and conclude at Greg Clark Park, where there will be a post-parade activities, including live music, a flyover, fireworks at 6:00, and we hope to see all of y'all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Benny. Ms. Home?
So tomorrow is Election Day. Hays County voters, Kyle voters can vote at any Hays County location. The Kyle locations are listed on the PowerPoint, and election results will be posted at cityofkyle.com/electionresults.
Everyone get out and vote, please. We do have a special city council meeting scheduled for November 9th for the canvas of the election.
So what are we doing?
And then...
What is it?
Our HR Director, Sandra Dren.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Veterans Day, November 11th. We will be closed to City Hall and city offices. Our Thanksgiving luncheon is coming up on Wednesday, November 17th, and we will be closing the offices temporarily from 12:00 to 1:30 to allow our team members to take bread and be together for Thanksgiving. And five-year anniversaries are coming up. We have Anthony Guzman from the Police Department, Eddie Guerrero from Public Works, 10 years, Louis Alvarado from Public Works, and Sido Castellano from Public Works. And a great celebration for Brett Lance. His 15th year is coming up also, and he's with Utility Building. He's our meter technician. And promotions that I want to announce is Amy Garcia has been promoted to the Recreation Manager and went through the promotional process, so please congratulate her when you see her. And I'll let Diana Torres make the announcement for the next one.
Good evening, mayor and council. Diana Torres, Economic Development Director for the record. I just wanted to acknowledge Victoria Vargas. She completed the OU EDI program, which is a three-year Economic Development Institute through OU, and graduated last Thursday, so wanted to acknowledge her in public. So Victoria is right back here. She just finished the ACM tour. If you have any questions about that program, I'm sure she'd be happy to chat with you about it.
Great job, Victoria. That concludes my report.
All right, next up, CIP Road Projects presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council. Leon Barber, City Engineer. Start off with Heroes Memorial Park. If some of you haven't been by there, it's really looking good. We're about 17% complete. We're still working on that. The bridge development's been poured, and they're still working on the retaining wall. Lot of other park, still working on utilities and a vaults are about 10% complete. Mary Cal Hartson Park Project, it's about 50% complete, 49% complete to be exact. They're working on the rubber safety surface that's going to be put in there this week. The artificial turf is being installed. Landscaping's going in around the northern sections. The promenade is poured. And according to the project manager, they have 10 miles of electrical wire that's being pulled through that project right now. Ballers were installed in the northwest section. Windy Hill Street and Drainage Project, that project is substantially complete. Once again, we're waiting for paperwork from the contractor to wrap it up. South Side Wastewater Improvement Projects, we're about 90% complete. They're finishing up putting the final touches on our lift station that's there off of Ole Post Road. That's pumps, electrical work that we need to complete in there. Hope to mobilize over to the Dexter right away to wrap up the section of line that we have there in front of the Murray property. Treatment Expansion Plant, we're about 79% complete. They're going to continue working Saturdays. Looks like the rain and everything else is in the holidays. You're just going to delay us, so they're going to continue working on Saturdays to keep their project on schedule. All the major concrete structures are in place. Electrical and piping still being installed in there. And we still plan to open that facility in March of 2022. And the dewatering facility itself will be completed in August of 2022. This is a current picture of the site. If you can kind of see that crane that's there on the left, that's their last big crane that's will probably be gone later this week. That's a good sign. That means all the heavy stuff's been done. They will have a mobile crane out there, but I think they had three large cranes at one time out on the project. Button Creek Interceptor, we have a little bit of progress on this one. We're about 60% complete. We completed a boring for the 42-inch pipe, and the boring for the 12-inch purple pipe is in progress. We expect that 36-inch pipe to be coming in sometime this month. That's what we've been told. So we're waiting on the 12-inch pipe and the 36-inch pipe to be delivered. Got our fingers crossed on that. Ole Post Road, good news. We did reach agreement with the owner. I'll be working on the paperwork, trying to get that back to council. We'll have to repeal the ordinance that we passed the first time and bring in the new ordinance. In the meantime, Public Works will be starting on the water line within a week or two, so we'll get started on their project again. LA Branch Interceptor, we're about 37% complete. They're still boring under the culvert there at Sledge. They've installed an 8-inch wastewater main from South Sledge to Scott Street. That's just a little spur off that main line. I'd like to point out in that picture on the lower left, that's the existing lift station at Bradford Meadows. One of the good things about this particular project, we will be decommissioning that lift station, so we'll get rid of one lift station for... So the Public Works Director can be happy that there's one less on his list of things to maintain. And that's all for my information. Any questions?
Thank you, Leon. Does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Tobias?
Yes, I was going to bring Mr. Sellers?
Yes, sir.
We have anything referencing Daisy and BB Road, by chance, from the county on that project? Any kind of updates?
Yeah.
Colby? Did you want to come on?
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Colby Harris. I'm with BGE, and we are representing the county on the Daisy Lane project. I'm here to provide a general update and take any questions y'all have. Try to answer them, but get back to you if I can't. I understand there was some questions, I guess, on the funding of the project. It is being funded by the 2016 County Road Bond Project wholly, with the exception of the joint bid water line that Goforth SUD is participating in some cost sharing of relocating and upgrading that utility. The overall project is three miles of roadway improvements. Daisy Lane from BB on the south up to Hillside Terrace on the north. General kind of design is adding one lane in each direction on the south side from BB up to Amberwood, so that'll be two lanes in each direction with a left turn lane. And then from Amberwood north to the completion of the project, it'll be adding a continuous left turn lane and shoulders on both sides. Of course, upgrading culvert crossings to current county standards. There are also a couple of shared use paths that are being built as part of this project, and they're generally where the schools are. So Chappa Middle School on the south, from BB all the way to Chappa, will be a 10-foot shared use path that gets built and constructed as part of this project. And on the north side, up near, excuse me, the... I think it's the McCormick School?
McCormick.
McCormick.
Yes, McCormick Jr.
Thank you. That shared use path up there is going to be prepared, but it won't actually be installed. They're going to do the grading, basically build a berm, but then at some point, the concrete could be installed, so they'll get it ready for that. In terms of the schedule, we started in April, and it's scheduled to go through September of '23. And I think the specific question was for the residents that live down there off of BB Lane, BB Road. The intersection design at BB and Daisy is going to be upgraded from a four-way stop to a full signalized intersection. What's currently three lanes on the north side is going to be five lanes. It's going to match the south side. So you've got two... What you have there is the pavement that's ready for two through lanes in each direction, a left turn lane for each side, and then the right turn lane from on the south side will remain. So that's what's coming at BB and Daisy, and it will include... I think there was some questions about streetlights.
Yes, sir.
With the signals at Daisy, there will also be luminaires. There will also be signals added at Windy Hill and Daisy. Those are the two intersections that'll be fully signalized.
Okay, great, because right in that area by Science Hall is, of course, the Kensington Trails neighborhood, and you also have those apartments that are down the road as well. And during the school year, there's a lot of children that use that and walk to school. And it's something that I've been hoping that would happen for many years now, which is finally happening, is to get those lights at that corner, that intersection, and just widening it by Chappa. I've had several people ask me about the project itself, and they were very happy that actually something's actually that's being widened. And it was just a matter of how far it's going to go. So you're saying from that corner all the way down to past McCormick to, I think, Robert... What's that street called?
The north side is Hillside Terrace.
Hillside Terrace, okay. So it's going to go all the way down there. Okay, so it's going to be just expanded. You said it's going to be five lanes?
It'll be five lanes.
Two lanes with a turning?
Yeah, it'll be five lanes on the south portion of the project up to Amberwood. Amberwood's the street just north of Chappa Middle School.
Yes, sir.
So we're adding a lane in each direction there. Now, from Amberwood for the remainder of the project, it's adding a left turn lane, continuous two-way left, and then the shoulders. But it'll only be one lane in each direction from Amberwood to Hillside Terrace at this time.
Will there be sidewalks added as well along that track?
So the shared use path that I mentioned on the north side, it'll be prepared for that, and then at some point, there will probably be a separate project to install those. The shared use path from BB all the way to Chappa will be built as part of this project.
That's great. Great to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions?
Councilman Rizzo?
Yeah, what timeline are we looking at? The traffic signal lights being operable?
Great question. The current schedule shows early to mid 2023 for that phase of the work. So right now, they're in Phase 1, which is generally the west side of the alignment. And then Phase 2 is scheduled for August of '22 through January of '23, and that includes a lot of the intersection work. And then Phase 3 of the project is currently February of '23 through September of 2023, which will be the end of the project. And the signals are going to occur at the end of Phase 2.
Okay, so the reason I'm asking is because I traveled that area this past Saturday, and it was really dark. The traffic through there was incredible. I mean, it was really, really bad. And then coming back down Daisy was a really treacherous turn as well. Actually, there was a lady that shot out in front of me, walking, that I didn't even see. So right now, it's really dangerous. So that's why I'm asking about timelines. So right now, as a city, Scott, we need to figure out what we can do to light up those intersections, those traffic lights being gone now, having those dark roadways, and all the foot traffic and vehicle traffic is really setting us up for something potentially bad to happen. So I need... We need something... We need to figure something out temporary, because that's a long way. The end of 2023, that's a long way away.
If you don't mind, if I might add, I know there's stop signs at that four corners, but I do travel that every day going to work, and it is dark out there, so I don't know if there's... People actually know that there's a stop sign of the corner, obviously, that it should be there, but like again, Councilor Rizzo, who actually stopped by to visit me, he actually made that point to where it is very dark on that corner. And I know we had the lights, but there's something that we can maybe look at, maybe to light it up just a little bit until we can get something in there permanent.
I mean, that was the first conversation I had with Michael when I got to his house was, man, that roadway is really dark, and it's really dangerous. So I had two, actually, two pedestrians almost walk out in front of me and almost didn't see him because they were in dark colors. And I kept thinking to myself, this is really bad. And I wasn't driving fast. If I was driving fast, probably would have hit one. Yeah.
You just doing work on the...
I'm sorry.
The north side of the road? I mean, I'm just thinking about the mast arm configuration. I mean, we can look at doing some sort of a, like a Cobra Head or temporary... I don't know your lighting schematic, but we'll get together and see if we can...
Yeah, because right now, there's some... I looked at the electrical poles there, so there are some poles that are nearby that we maybe could utilize, but I'd love to see something temporary go up just till we get to that stage.
Okay. You got it. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. It really helps answer a lot of questions. It really helps answer a lot of questions knowing that that's coming. Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Does anybody have any other questions or comments on the CIP report? All right, we're going to move on. If there are no objections, I'm actually going to bring Item 17 to the front and decide on just we have some scheduling issues. Is that the right one? 17? Yep. And I'll turn the floor to Mayor Protam.
Okay, Item 17. This is an item that's been postponed for a few meetings now. An ordinance amending Chapter 53 zoning. This item does have a public hearing. I will go ahead and open the public hearing for this item. Anybody wishing to speak on Item 17? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. I will go ahead and make a motion to deny the zoning request for Item 17 as written. I have a motion by... Okay, all right.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protam, a second by Councilmember Flores Cale. Any discussion on the item? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Back to the top, Item Number 5. Consider approving an early local agreement between the City of Kyle and Hays County for city funding obligations for the Center Street Union Pacific Rail Siding Project, not to exceed $1,230,000 under this ILA. Carlos Lopez, this is your item.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Carlos Lopez. I'm with HNTB Corporation. I also serve as Hays County GEC Program Manager. The item before you is the approval of an ILA between the city and the county to outline costs that are associated with the Kyle siding relocation project and also its sister project, the Coler's Crossing Overpass, that we're hoping to apply for Campbell funding in the spring of '22. The costs that are shown in the ILA are consistent with the application the city sent into Campbell in 2018 and memorialize those costs. They mainly capture the costs that are not eligible for reimbursement because the AFA with Texod just recently got executed, and now we can actually start asking for some reimbursement. I'm here to answer any questions you all may have.
Does the council have any questions?
Not really a question. I just wanted to make comment real quick. I know a lot of the residents have talked about this for a long time. It's great to see the county and the city and Campbell participating and trying to remedy what the situation we have in downtown Kyle. I mean, sometimes we sit there for 30 minutes to an hour waiting on trains to pass each other, so definitely going to be great for the re-siding. I'm really looking forward to it. You know, as a 52-year resident of Kyle, I'm definitely looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. It certainly is a unique project, one very different than Campbell has funded in the past.
Yes.
Yes, is this going to affect the front of like Center Street when you come in, or will that still have the waiting time?
So the proposal is for the siding to be relocated from here, right in front of the City Hall, and actually, the siding would begin about 2,000 feet north of Burleson, and then it'll end just north of Coler's Crossing. And that particular area has no at-grade crossings and actually has an overpass here at 1626, so this should mitigate folks having to wait for trains to do their work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there is no further questions, can I have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve... Mayor Protam, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item 5.
Yep, 5.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Rizzo, a second by Councilmember Flores Cale. Any discussion on the item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Item Number 6...
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item Number 6, authorize city managers to execute site-specific declarations of covenants, restrictions, and easements for Heroes Memorial Tracks and approved letter agreements authorizing the conveyance and addressing drainage and restrictive covenant obligations. Scott Sellers, this is your item.
All right, Mayor Protam, council. Good evening, Scott Sellers, city manager for the record. What you have before you is the final pieces, if you will, of easements and property transactions to ensure appropriate drainage into the Heroes Memorial Park project from the drainage basin. It allows our project to continue on its timeframe unencumbered as Cadence McShane is continuing to do the work, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have on the item.
Councilmember Flores Cale?
Thank you. I sent an email to Page yesterday, and I was wondering, and so if you'll let me, I'll just read it. I just said that I was working through the agenda and noticed that Number 6 had a letter agreement, and the signature block for Plum Creek Developers Partners LTD had three signature lines, one of which was Mountainland City Come LLC. But then when I looked up their public information report for 2021, it showed Laura Nagley Gill and Richard B. Nagley as the managing members. So my question was, did we... Did the city happen to view a company agreement that showed a change of managing partners or managing members?
Councilmember Flores Cale, I've got... I've printed out the documents necessary to confirm who the appropriate signatories will be, and so we will do that prior to everything being finalized with the title company. The title company will address that and review those documents as well, what accompanies the title and final conveyance documents are in addition to the signatory and signing. We're going to have resolutions from each corporation that authorize and confirm that they're approving these documents as well. So there's several layers of confirmation of property owners and authorized signers, so all of that will be addressed before closing.
Okay. Out of curiosity, do we look at those prior to drafting these agreements?
The council for the property owners prepared that, and so we had several details to work through to get these documents finalized here today. That's the last piece that needs to be confirmed, and so we will do that before signing. But all the other details in the agreements are where we need to be to finalize this, and if... I would ask that council allow us to confirm those and finalize those prior to signing and closing.
Okay, and we were going to do that for both parties?
We'll do that for all the parties. I've got it printed for all the parties who have to sign any documents on this transaction.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Councilman Ellison?
So with the documents, so I guess, just to clarify, the documents after the restrictive covenants and the authorization to execute all the documents, will that be brought back to council for a final review before it's finished, or would this be authorizing to finish out that process?
This authorizes to finish out the process, and so what you have in front of you, the site-specific declarations, which are the most material agreement, that's not going to change. The letter agreement related to the Plum Creek Mixed Use Master declarations will not change, and the agreement related to the plat notes that one of the property owners wants on the property, those won't change. If anything changes, it will just be confirming the persons who sign off on the agreement. I've relied somewhat on the property owners' counsel to get that correct, but again, that will be confirmed both by me and the title company, as well as there are resolutions that each company, each signatory who's a company and entity, they have to have a resolution that shows that companies authorized to sign on these documents as well. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Ellison?
Yes, ma'am. I guess I was just trying to see what could... And you went through it.
Yeah, what could change? What would change would be who's identified as the person signing. That would be what would change. And we can provide council with confirmation of any changes as well.
And would that be for all parties or just the changing of the parties representing the city?
If there's changes to anybody who's signing... So the city's parties won't change. Whoever signs on behalf of the city, it's either going to be the mayor or the city manager. If anybody signs on behalf of one of the other parties to the agreement, because you see there's several parties, if anybody changes on that side, we'll confirm with council what changes those would be. But ultimately, the goal of everybody involved, especially the title company, will be that they've got that information correct.
Any further questions? I'll make a motion to approve Item 6 as written.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protam, a second by Councilmember Rizzo. Any further discussion on the item? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five to one. Item Number 7, approval of a change order from Cadence McShane Construction. David Harding.
Mayor Protam, Coach, council members, thanks for having me tonight. As you said, this is a change order number four to Cadence McShane Construction Company in the amount of not to exceed $438,030. It's worth mentioning that on this project initially for Heroes Memorial Park project, and by the way, I am David Harding, I'm the project manager on the park, representing the city. And initially, we had a robust effort to value engineer out from the project $1 million. And initially, we had a robust effort to value engineer out from the project $1 million. So, we had an initial contract total of 800, or I'm sorry, $8,950,000. We were able to value engineer out a million. And of those value engineering changes, we were, we rejected a certain amount of those in the amount of $438,30. We did keep $561,970 that we achieved through value engineering on this project. Those are purely value engineering efforts. In addition to that, we actually are getting some value engineering from Texas Disposal Systems, which has been helpful. We have a sort of rough order of magnitude currently of 50,000, but we have way more in the pipeline coming by way of soils, trees, and a number of other things, construction materials coming from Texas Disposal Systems. So, stay tuned, that number's going to only go up. I'm happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Rizzo.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for working with TDS. TDS has proven to be a great partner for the city, seeing that now we are having the value and seeing the value is a plus for us. And seeing this number go up is amazing, it's just a saving for the city. So, thank you for partnering with them and working with them. I know sometimes it's hard to work between two entities and you guys are doing it, so thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It's worth noting too, in case you're not aware, initially, that value engineer, that TDS effort was only for Hero's Memorial Park. And there was a goal of $750,000 we were trying to hit in material contributions. An ambitious goal, but we, you know, we're targeting that. When it became clear that we didn't think we would probably hit that on Hero's alone, our company took it on ourselves to go and sort of hit that for Uptown Central Park as well, Laverde Park. And so, we're engaging that same process with Laverde and seeing some great results. So, I really anticipate getting much closer to that number and, you know, yeah, it's our pleasure. We love the city of Kyle and anything we can do.
So, Mr. Harding, I'll get right to you. So, Mr. Harding, you said of the 750,000 that TDS was willing to provide for trees, soils, all that stuff.
Yes, sir.
How much are we hitting for Hero's Memorial Park?
We have a rough order of magnitude currently of 50,000. So, the contractor is still, really in the process of tallying all those items. So, I spoke with them today, that is, they're just, we don't actually know yet because we're still speaking with their concrete specialists, their soil specialists, figuring out how much TDS can actually manufacture for us and what timelines is going to matter. So, we don't want to delay our schedule too bad, but we also want to achieve savings. So, it's a balance there. The answer, the true answer is we just don't know yet. But again, as it sits currently, it's roughly 50. But I'm anticipating, I don't really want to give you a number specifically just yet because I, you know, but I, you know.
Are you anticipating half? I mean, I understand it's a ballpark.
I am, yes, I am.
Okay. And then you're anticipating to be able to move that remainder over to...
Between the two parks, I'm hopeful for that, yeah.
Between the two parks?
Between the two parks, yes, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Flores Cale.
Thank you. So, Agenda Item Number Seven, are we doing a change order to increase and spend an extra $438,000?
Yes, yes, ma'am. So, Councilmember Yvonne Flores Cale, we are putting that money back into the contract. So, yes, yes, ma'am, we are increasing the contract amount again by $438,30. We initially took a million out and now we're putting back $438,30.
And if I can just jump in on that, so the follow-up is we will have to bring this back to council for a budget amendment, this as well as the next item.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Movements?
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Seven.
Second, I have a motion by Councilmember Rizzo, a second by Mayor Pro Tem, Coach, to approve Item Number Seven as written. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Coach, Councilmembers, appreciate you.
Item Number Eight, approval of a change order number six from Cadence McShane Construction not to exceed $99,002. Leon, this is your item.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mayor Pro Tem. Let me explain some of the history on this particular request. We have another project that we've been designing. It's called the Plum Creek Phase Three Golf Course Project. It's a wastewater interceptor that starts where the Anthem Line connected to one of our wastewater lines and then heads south along the railroad tracks. That project also includes an eight-inch reclaimed water line that will start at the Plum Creek Pond where we currently have our pond effluent flowing into that irrigates the golf course fields. What we were planning to do is take that line, go north, and then cross private property and then go north on Cromwell and then go up to Coler's Crossing and stop at the north end. The Hero's Project was supposed to pick it up at that point and make a connection. This project, on the Golf Course Project, got delayed for a couple of reasons, really major reasons. One is we're still working with the owner to get that easement that we need to cross their property. And the other reason is the pipe prices that we were expecting on this project. We were using about a 24-inch size PVC, so we didn't want to take any chances on trying to get any really high prices. So, we're hoping this delay would help us with those prices and also give us time to get that easement. So, what we decided to do was to ask Cadence McShane to give us an estimate or a proposal for extending that eight-inch reclaimed line south back from the north side of Coler's Crossing, hopefully I'm making this clear. It's, right now, there is a section of line at the Hero's Memorial that's part of the project already. We want them to take it south on the Coler's, put it on the south side and do the boards that are required to put that under the road. What we were concerned about is that if we ended up doing this Golf Course Project, we'd end up going back into Hero's Park, putting a bore pit in there on newly constructed infrastructure. So, we wanted to avoid that. And that's the reason we asked for this request. Hopefully, I was clear enough on that.
Councilmember Rizzo.
Leon, who identified this about going in early and doing this pre-work so we wouldn't have to, you know, tear up our memorial again?
I did, Councilmember.
I wanted to say thank you because that's something that I've seen many cities deal with where they bring in new infrastructure and didn't, weren't forward-thinking. And next thing you know, you're tearing up brand-new pavement, concrete, asphalt. So, thanks for recognizing this and bringing this forward. So, I think that's great that we're going to do this pre-construction to the park and that way we don't upset any of the, you know, work that's done there, the artwork or whatever's going in there. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no more questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Eight.
I have a, I have a motion by Councilmember Rizzo, I have a second by Councilmember Flores Cale to approve Item Number Eight as written. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Item passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, Item Number Nine, approve a resolution of the city of Kyle, Texas, accepting a preliminary service and assessment plan for the Plum Creek North Public Improvement District. This is a mouthful of information. John Snyder, I'm going to have you explain to us this item, please.
Great. Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor, Council, John Snyder with P3 Works, we're the city's pit administrator. So, this is the first time we're going to be up here for the Plum Creek North Pit. I think we're going to be back three more times here in the next six weeks or so. This is the preliminary service and assessment plan. So, at this point, you wouldn't actually be levying any assessments, it's really just complying with statute. You're calling the public hearing for the November 16th meeting, or November 16th, excuse me. November 16th, you'd be looking to actually levy assessments and that would put about $9.1 million of assessments on Plum Creek, but there wouldn't be any bonds yet. The bond process was a little bit behind and they're already selling homes, so they want to close homes, we have to have the assessment in place. And then we'd come back in the first meeting in December and authorize the distribution of the plum. And then I believe it's December 15th would be the actual bond pricing. I'm happy to, there's obviously a big document here, I'm happy to answer any questions on that. But again, the big number is about $9.1 million. There's $6,385,000 in improvement area one and then another $2,730 in the major improvement area, which is the balance of the project.
Thank you, John. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Snyder? Movements?
Mayor motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem, Coach, seconded by Councilmember Ellison. Is there a discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, John. All right, next up Agenda Item Number Ten, authorize award and execution of a purchase order to Rush Works in an amount not to exceed $29,600 utilizing PEG funds for the upgrade of services and AV equipment used to record and broadcast public meetings. Matt Dawson.
Good evening, Council. For the record, Matt Dawson, Director of IT, looking for authorization to spend $29,600 to upgrade key servers and other AV equipment here in council chambers. These upgrades are needed. The equipment is old before my time and it'll help us strive for the level of quality that we look to have for recording and broadcasting our public meetings onto the internet and the public access channel.
Thank you, Matt. Does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Rizzo.
I just wanted to make a motion, but let's go and go through the, anybody else has a question?
Does anybody have any questions?
I just have a comment to say thank you for bringing this forward, Matt. You know, this is important to us and to viewers who watch, so thank you for upgrading the equipment. Happy to support it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ellison.
I was going to make a motion to approve the Agenda Item as written.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Ellison, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. Is there a discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Matt. Next up Agenda Item Number Eleven, authorize the police department to purchase four wheel-load wear scales in an amount not to exceed $21,000. Chief Barnett.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jeff Barnett, Chief of Police, for the record. This item before you will assist our Kyle Police Department in enforcing your overweight vehicles that are traveling on the city streets. The item before you is to purchase four scales that our traffic division will have in their vehicles. They can carry those around to the city streets and conduct enforcement efforts. That's for the $21,000 total that you see. They are a sole-source vendor here in the United States for that product and we're asking it so that we can help protect the roadways, the integrity of the roadways, and then also roadway safety.
Questions, comments? Councilmember Rizzo.
Just a comment real quick, Chief. Thank you for that explanation. And one reason why I say thank you is because the residents thank you. I get lots of emails from residents, I see a lot of comments out there about these large trucks tearing up our roadways, having this enforcement there, making sure people are not overloaded. Saving our roadways is important, especially because our roadways are lacking because we're growing so fast. So, being able to preserve what we have and what we've built in the future is going to be key. So, thank you for bringing this item forward.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Ellison.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Agenda Item as written.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Ellison, seconded by Councilmember Flores Cale. Is there a discussion on the motion? Scott? Sure, just one quick thing. So, this will help us as we designate truck routes through the city. For construction sites, trucks do have the ability to go point-to-point, but we can work with the developers to ensure that they route specifically away from certain neighborhoods and towards some of our major roads or arterials. Our goal as we build, especially the loops, the bypasses around cities, to make those the truck routes. We also want to work with Texas to get Center Street designated as a non-truck route because of the narrowness of the streets, a lot of pedestrian traffic, especially as the park is built. So, this is a step in that direction as we designate routes through the city and we can start making those finds. Any other comments?
I couldn't agree with you more. You know, the Robert S. Light Truck Route that...
Absolutely. It's going to be great.
That the groundbreaking on is going to help alleviate a lot for Buta, but also for Kyle.
Absolutely.
I think it's an amazing project. It was great to be there the other day for the groundbreaking, so yeah, definitely looking forward to the future.
Got it. Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next up, Agenda Item Number Twelve, consider amending the project management services contract with K. Frees and Associates to add two additional roads. Mr. Barba.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Leon Barba, City Engineer. Mayor, Council approved a contract with K. Frees and Associates back on October 19th and we had a scope of services listed in their contract. We would like to add two additional roads to that contract. If I can have the slides. We had difficulty, by the way, naming those roads because they start and end at different roadways. There you go. This is what I called Seaton Parkway. It actually goes, cuts across the creek there, goes north, crosses, I mean, Beebe Road and heads north up to Coler's Crossing. And that would make that connection there. This was not on their scope of services, so we'd like to add this road on there. The second one is the one I call the Lehman Road Extension. We went ahead and showed some additional roads that could be connected with this particular extension. Right now, Kyle Parkway is on that list, but we don't have that north section going from Lehman Road, then kind of goes west back and ties into Seaton Parkway up there. So, that's the other road we would like to add to the scope of services with K. Frees and Associates.
Thank you, Leon. Does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Flores Cale.
Thank you. Do we know how many projects K. Frees and Associates currently has? I just want to make sure we're not overfilling their plate.
We have assigned them, we have a rotation list and K. Frees and Associates is on that list. They have one project now, is the Sledge Street Drainage Project. And they're doing a preliminary engineering report. And then once they complete that, then we're probably going to assign them to do the, redo the Sledge Street culvert. So, that'll be the second project they'll be getting. And this is a separate contract with them. So, the scope of services, I think, had 10 roads?
Yeah, let me try to jump in and answer that. So, K. Frees is just what we call the GEC, it's a general engineering contract. So, they will just basically be the project manager to oversee all of the underlying roadways that need to be designed. So, yeah, 10, maybe 12 different roads that will be subbed out to different engineering firms that will each have to go through the RFP or RFQ process and we bring those back individually based on the road that they're doing.
I just want to make sure 12 roads isn't too much for them to oversee.
When we went through the review process, we made it clear to them that there was going to be quite a bit of work involved, so they said they were ready.
I'm not questioning if they want to do it. I'm sure they want to get paid. Again, I just want to make sure these are really important roads and I want to make sure they all get the adequate amount of attention that they deserve.
There may be 15 roads if I'm thinking correctly on this, so it's a good number.
And I do have plans to assign them another project off the rotation list, but haven't done that yet.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Ellison.
Yes, I was just going to say if we could get just maybe an email recap of all the projects and roads in one big comprehensive list, that would be helpful. But I'm in favor of adding these two roads and I'd like to make a motion to approve the Agenda Item as written.
Second.
All right, it's motion by Councilmember Ellison, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Tobias.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Okay, I'm looking at this map right here that you have up, Leon. Intersection from Kyle Parkway and of course Lehman and then right there was Seaton Parkway. The circles that are there, are those what I think they are?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No stoplights, right? No street lights? I just witnessed an accident right there on Parkway and Dacey earlier this afternoon. Okay.
Right now, we haven't done a formal study on Kyle Parkway at Dacey Lane, but there have been a number of accidents there. I'm just estimating that they would probably warrant a traffic signal at this point in time.
Yeah, because it's coming down a hill from Dacey if you're heading south. And I think the same issue we had this past weekend at Lehman and 150. I guess maybe because of that accident that happened there, when people come down that hill, I guess probably at a high rate of speed, there's nothing stopping them. If they know, at least they know that there's going to be a street light there. So, that's a big concern right there because it's continuous flow. And if you don't have any kind of barriers to stop the traffic, people trying to get out of some of these areas, especially like in Kensington Trails up in that neighborhood, I mean, these cars are just, it's like Russian roulette, just trying to pull out as fast as they can.
Councilmember, I'll jump in on that. So, we asked the engineer to, United States, the engineer, this transportation master plan engineer, to look at locations where roundabouts made sense, maybe over traffic signals. Where there are hills, it actually does make sense there. And so, you see at Dacey and Kyle Parkway where there was the accident, I'm going to refer to the other accident you mentioned at Lehman and 150. That accident... That accident just occurred over this weekend, was a vehicle that, at a signal, turned left in front of a motorcycle. And those two motorcyclists who were on that one machine are critically injured. If there was a roundabout at that intersection and not a signal, that would not have happened because it forces that right turn. It did not force a left turn. They thought they had a green signal, I think, per the report, but they turned right in front of that motorcycle who had the right of way. With these roundabouts, what the transportation engineer is saying is by forcing all those vehicles to the right, you significantly mitigate the severity of an accident should it occur in that intersection. So we have looked at Dacey and Kyle Parkway very recently. Last week, we did a little mock-up of what a roundabout could look like there, and it does fit very well with the space we have. So because of the limited site distance, the hill, et cetera, I think when we have our subs look at this roadway, we'll have them look at both, but chances are, they will recommend a roundabout in that location.
Okay, because I'm looking at the large amount of traffic that just goes through there. If you've got the roundabout, like what you guys are wanting to do, it's just a matter of cars just trying to intertwine with each other, and it's heavy, heavy traffic. And so, I mean, I can maybe understand, like, in some of the areas near Burleson, but these are, roads are very, very heavily populated with big cars, trucks, and commercial vehicles, and...
The roundabout will get more traffic through, for one, but it will slow traffic down. I think that's what our goal is. We want to slow traffic down and make it a safe approach and safe intersection for those cars to proceed. What we find with signals is that cars, especially coming down a hill, will try to beat that light and then, you know, have to lock up their brakes if the light changes too quickly. So we want to avoid the speeding up at the intersection, and the roundabout will naturally do that.
My question is, as it relates to K. Frees as the GEC, what's their... So the last roundabout that we did, we had a lot of problems with the engineer and expectations, standards. I know we've adopted some new standards to really help with that, but can you give a sense of what role K. Frees would play in ensuring that everything that we're assigning to them is very meticulously and properly engineered for not only the current climate, but future climates as well? I mean, that's just my... And then also, you know, making sure that during construction, that, you know, intersections aren't being shut down, roads aren't being completely shut down, those kind of things. Is that underneath their purview, or would that be underneath their subs' purview?
That will be both. We're going to expect the K. Frees and Associates to review the plans and make sure they're meeting all the criteria that we've established, and then we're going to expect the subcontract firm, whichever engineering firm that is, to make sure that they follow the same rules and regulations that we set for them. We are having our meeting with K. Frees and Associates Wednesday to kind of go over all those details and what we're going to expect from them.
Okay. My other question is, as it relates to the timing of construction, so the Kyle Parkway extension, the Go-4th extension, I'm not really sure we don't, those aren't CIP projects yet. We're trying to cobble together funding and put the projects together, but the intersection, to kind of go off of what's been said here at Kyle Parkway and Dacey in particular, is obviously pretty scary. Regardless of what kind of intersection it is, the current one's the worst, you know? Before that was the worst. There wasn't even a stop sign there until we put one in. But by connecting the intersection to this future roadway project, I'm worried that we'll be putting off the traffic problem we currently have to wait to improve that intersection until we do this big road project. So if we knew the road project was moving forward, you know, in short order, then that probably wouldn't be a problem. But if this is, let's say, five years out, you know, are we sure that we want to tie the intersection into this particular project, or might it be better to focus on the intersection as a standalone project to make sure that we're getting that project taken care of faster? Does that make sense, what I'm asking?
It does. Either way, I think on this project, if we were to engage an engineer just for the roundabout or the full road, we can start the design. We can task the engineer with starting on Phase One as a roundabout. So I think we can probably get away with having them design the whole road, but with this being their first priority.
Mayor and Council, we have budgeted some money in this year's budget for traffic signals and intersections, so we do have money to where we at least initiate the study to get 30% designed and come up with a cost estimate, so there is...
Well, I don't want us to solve this problem and then forget about the road.
Correct.
I don't want us to be thinking high and lofty thoughts about the road and then leave this problem here for longer than it needs to be left. So I don't know what the balance there is, but that's just my concern.
Correct.
My first recommendation was that we could, at this point, probably justify it and always stop. And I think I've talked to Harper a little bit about it, but there's methods and things that you can do to make sure that people see the stop sign. Typically, I think 24-inch stop signs are 24 inches. I would ask Harper to install 30-inch or 36-inch bigger stop signs and advanced warning signs, and I've seen where other cities will actually, on the pavement, stop ahead, some big bright letters to say it advises people, there's a stop sign ahead, and maybe add more lighting in the area. So there's a way to do something that's not too expensive, but then a quicker solution would be traffic signals, of course, because we can get that done within a year, I would think. But that's, those are some solutions.
Okay.
I think right now, the quickest fix would be the stop signs and all the markings. What is the current speed limit there on that road? 35?
I'm going to say 45. 45?
45.
Do you remember what happened when we put that stop sign up at Bunton and Dacey? It backed traffic up the hill. I mean, it sort of...
45. It did. It's 45, right? Someone just said that. So yeah, usually when you install new stop signs, we saw the same thing at Veterans and Silverado. It takes, I say six weeks, just to give it plenty of time, but about three weeks for traffic patterns to normalize with the new signs. And we just understand that for the first few weeks, it's going to be crazy.
Yeah, people are going to complain.
But it will be safe.
And really, when they look at it, what we're trying to do up here is not cause a problem. We're looking at saving lives. We're looking at an intersection that's dangerous. This week, improved it, and now we're looking to see what can we do as a city to try to mitigate some of those dangers in that roadway. And I think that most of the citizens will see that and know that we've got their best intentions at heart, and it's not something we're just, we don't, as a city, want to go throw up stop signs everywhere because it's not beneficial for us, you know, as a cost estimate. This is about identifying problem areas, making sure that people are safe, and moving forward. So I'd love to see that and maybe even do a study with a speed limit.
We can bring that back as part of our engineering analysis on it.
We can do that.
Thank you, Leon.
Any other questions or comments?
No, but I just want to say, I appreciate this discussion because I've been getting a number of comments and contact about this intersection, and I agree with what has been said so far by the council, but particularly by the mayor, of that finding that balance of not forgetting about the road and how we want to complete that, but also this intersection. I think some remediation initially, until we get to the point where we finalize what that intersection will be, would probably be very helpful for the residents in that area.
Anyone else? All right, I think we have a motion on the table, don't we? On this one?
Yes.
I can't remember. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. All right, next up, agenda item number 13. Development agreement establishing development agree... Consider possible action of a development agreement establishing development standards for RPC Kyle LLC and Kyle 120 LLC. Mr. Atkinson.
Will Atkinson, for the record, City Planner. This is a development agreement that allows us to enforce materials on the town center aspect of the following agenda item for the rezoning. From a state law perspective, it's difficult to enforce it, so we just had to pull it out and create a separate, quick document related to that.
Okay, is there any questions? Comments? Councilmember Flores Cale.
Thank you. All right, I think this question might be more for Paige. So Section 3 gives the development standards, and it looks like there's only two. If we didn't have this DA, what would be the difference between the way they could build?
The state law was changed to provide that cities couldn't require stricter building materials, building techniques than what is present in the building codes, the international standard building codes. And so there's exceptions to that. But generally speaking, if the building code allows a material, then the city's ordinance couldn't, zoning ordinance couldn't require that material. So we do so by development agreement to make it enforceable. And then the developer, this is based on what the developers proposing the project look like, and so it helps the city enforce that and helps the developer ensure that that project is enforced to his vision because it gives the city the ability to use the building codes. It's a building permitting process to make sure that the project is built with those building materials.
So really, this DA is just in regards to development requirements? Because it also discusses permits, but I can't imagine that that would be any different within a development agreement than without a development agreement.
So what this does is it sets out the agreement of the developer that the buildings will be built with those certain masonry materials, that any building in the project will be constructed with those building materials. And then the developer and the city agree that the city can use their building permitting processes to enforce that. So that means when the developer submits an application for a building permit, they've got to show that they're using one of those building materials that's in the agreement, and then the city won't issue a permit unless the building permit complies with this development agreement as well as the other city ordinances.
Okay, so the whole DA is just for Section 3, just A and B?
Yes, I mean, that's, I would, that is exactly a good synopsis of that. It's very limited to building materials, and then the city can enforce them with its building permitting process.
Okay, because what I don't want to see, which I know we've had with other developers, are amendments. Like, I don't want it to be Amendment Number 1, Amendment Number 2. I want, I would like to see a good, solid DA where we don't have to keep coming back and approving any changes.
We would like that, too, but, you know. And this runs with the land, so it just binds the future properties as they're sold to builders. So this is pretty simple, straightforward. Hopefully, that won't be an issue, but sometimes people request amendments.
No.
We like them, so, but this one's pretty simple. I don't anticipate an amendment.
Okay, so to go back, and this might be for Scott. I know we had a developer that had three different amendments, all that the city brought to them. For example, the school wall and... So I want to make sure the city is not going to go and say, hey, you need to make all these changes, especially when it's not stated in the beginning. I don't want to give the developer any, I mean, I'm all about our residents, don't get me wrong, but I don't want to give the developer any undue additional cost above... I mean, I think we're all realistic with the fact that there are going to be a little bit, but things like a fence and other major constructions, I don't want to see that.
So just real quick, just to refresh your memory, the wall was actually brought by the school district because they, their property aligns with the schools district. So the school district was actually the one that brought up the wall to get the DA moving forward with the developer.
Right, but the development agreement is not between the school and the developer. It's between the city and the developer. And so if there is, I mean, if I was a developer, I might be a little bit turned off by the fact that while you're developing all these houses and that all of a sudden you see this additional want from the city later on down. And I'm just, I'm trying to think of all parties included. So ultimately, what I don't want to see are major costs put on the developer or to the city later on when we could be sure in the beginning of the development agreement that we're getting everything that we'd like to see.
Anything else? Movements?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Rizzo. Is there a discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up, agenda item number 14, second reading. An ordinance amending Chapter 53 of the City of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of assigning original zoning to approximately 318 total acres, PUD zoning, for property located at 700 and 800 Bunton Lane. This item was, Mr. Atkinson, if you want to re-present, this item was voted on at the last, but we didn't have the full council here to support, so that's why it's back for second reading. Does anyone have any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Flores Cale.
Thank you. I'm kind of feeling nervous about this. The more I look into things and to see the traffic that's going to be on these roads, in the backup material, there's a letter, and it discusses the things that the developer plans on doing, and one of them is to ensure the safety, orderly, and healthful development and expansion of the city in accordance with and pursuant to the master plan for the 700 Bunton PUD. So when we talk about safety, orderly, healthful, what does that look like to our residents? Are we making sure that they're not going to be majorly inconvenienced by traffic? Are we making sure that the congestion in that area is not going to be more than we originally thought? So I love this project, and I've said nothing but good things about it, but the more we hear from our residents and their concerns, and the more I look at it and think, is this really what we originally bargained for? Because I felt like in the beginning, I can't, I don't want to compare it to Plum Creek, but I don't want it to be the same development on both sides, meaning a whole bunch of homes with garages in the back or narrow streets, which I spoke with Hunter about, which is a huge concern of mine for the fire department and our first responders. I have heard from Plum Creek residents how they get nervous when there's cars parked on each side, that they don't think, they're like, well, for sure, a fire truck could never get through there. And so I don't want to have that same issue with this development.
All right, other comments? Councilmember Tobias.
All right, thank you. About an hour before I came to meeting today, I did have a conversation with some resident in Bunton Creek. And they really stressed to me, again, the same thing Councilmember Flores Cale is stressing, is that development in that area with the roads the way they are, and I know I continuously harp on this, and I've had conversations with Councilmember Rizzo about this as well, just hearing them say that when they drive home and they see students walking in the grass, also when it rains in the mud, and there's still no plan for roads out there to connect to this development. Also, the big concern they had was when it floods out there, it really, really floods. So having this development here in the situation where we would have the same flood again in 2015, 2017, we have no way for these people to get out. If there's any kind of road closures or anything like that, their concern again was when the roundabout fiasco was going on. They have to go all the way around 150 just to get 150 back to Lehman, just to get to the high school, when only the high school's less than about a mile and a half away. As much as, again, I like the concept, but I am listening to the residents and their big concerns, and they're really stressing to me, you approve this or you go through this, again, you've talked about a master plan, Councilman Tobias, you guys are talking about building these roads, but again, where can we guarantee, where we can get developers to really, really help us on these roads, to get them to where there are standards? I mean, did South Lake, when they were being built, did we have the opportunity to present to them, you're building out here, you're going to reconstruct Bunton? Or what about over there near Steeplechase or other places like that? Because the roads still look the same. And that is the biggest, biggest concern and biggest voice that I've been hearing from a lot of these residents is that road going towards this development. And that's a big concern. And I'm hearing them and I agree, I've driven down that road. And so that's about the only thing besides, I know that there's the lot for the elementary school, but then again, when you look at those, that item right there, that's got to go through a bond for the school district. And you never guarantee that that's where that school's going to need to be built. And so I understand they want to dedicate the land, which is, which is nice, but then again, we don't know in the future, that's where the next elementary school or middle school is going to need to go. So, and when you build in those kind of cities or in those kind of neighborhoods, you have problems like you have with Idea and Fuentes and everybody off there, you have that congested area. So again, like I said, it does look promising, but again, it's the roads that are my biggest drawback on this.
Well, my thoughts on that are, what I would tell the resident that you brought up, Councilmember, is that, you know, South Lake Ranch did not contribute very much, nor did Bunton Village or any of the other developments that have happened before the modern era. They did not, they did not contribute to Bunton expansion and improvement. So the expansion improvement on Bunton that we've created already, you know, that's just on the backs of the general fund, but this, you know, the Rastagar property is a cornerstone development to the creation of the TERS 3 and road improvements that are currently in plan. So if the answer is, we're going to say no to this, then Bunton as an expansion, the projects that are currently underway have to stop as well because it's a cornerstone development to that. There's no way to fund it without Rastagar. So it really is a question of, do we want to allow for these projects to move forward and set them up in such a way that they are fully maximized as far as generating revenue for road improvements? And in particular, Grist Mill as well as Bunton, a secondary road? Or do we want to say, no, we want to leave this dirt and we want to leave Bunton Lane alone and just let it all be? Because you'll never be able to improve Bunton, you know, unless you want to raise taxes, but then you're, you're building a road, you know, and then saying, now that this road is built, we'll have development come in and I'm not sure how they would pay for it at that point in time. So is, maybe I'm misrepresenting your thoughts there, but I personally don't know how we would, how we would keep moving forward with the Bunton Lane expansion that we're currently working on without Rastagar.
Okay, so I guess to go with that is, how can we guarantee that, Mayor? How can we guarantee this developer would make those improvements all the way through? Because it needs to be totally reconstructed.
It would not be the developer who did it, it would be the city. The Pid TERS overlay that we're proposing for the Rastagar and the Coll Estates east and west, I believe, are, are, those dollars are being put together to help pay for the road improvements. But it's, they, it's a city project, it's not going to be a Rastagar project. So we're just using Rastagar to raise the money through the development to pay for and to reimburse us or pay for the debt service over time for the road improvements. We're not, this is not a, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong with Scott's gone, but if, you know, the, maybe Hunter can answer this, but there's no proposal to increase, to do all of Bunton Lane through this project, but there is a proposal to generate capital for the city so that the city can do the project. And it's in our, it's in our plans right now.
But yeah, I believe it's Bunton widening of Bunton, widening of Goforth as well. I believe there was discussion about an intersection or a roundabout at the previous slide you showed a couple of agenda items ago, at Lehman and Bunton Road. That's either a roundabout or an intersection there as well. So the regional TERS that our property and the, you know, and the homes and the retail areas that we create there would help fund, would create that, and then we would be building out Grist Mill through our property, providing a secondary roadway as an east-west connector for the region.
I don't know if Leon is still here, Leon, he is still here, but do you know if the K-30 project includes Bunton as well, all through here? So, and the way to pay for it is through the TERS and then also 2022 bond that we're pursuing. So it's fully within our ability to control. I just don't, if we just don't approve this, then why would we, why would we spend the funds to improve Bunton Lane? That's the question.
It's like saying if we don't approve this, then everybody there, doesn't matter. They do. That's the whole key, is those people have been waiting for that road to be done, to be reconstructed for many, many years. And if we are still going to be putting this on the bond, by all means, yes. But I just wanted to, to make it clear to where if we're going to have these developments, any future developments, when we have these developers come through, is that we have them assist us with developing these roads and making them to where when they, people come into their development, that the roads are up to our city standards. On that, Councilman Rizzo.
Yeah, and I think that's kind of where we're headed with this project, is starting the TERS to fund most of the roadways there, coming back with the bond as well, and the improvements there. If you're thinking that we've forgotten about those people, we're not. We're actually bringing something, something that's come forward that we can help fund those roadways now in real time. And that's what we're looking at is, how do you get a funding source? This is the first step of that funding source. And now you don't have to bring such a large bond to the taxpayers because now you have the TERS in place. And that's what is going to bring these roadways to fruition. You know, I had a discussion with a member of Campbell a while back, and I think there might be some funding areas in that for Campbell as well. So there's several conversations going on that I think are going to bring this road to fruition a lot sooner than most people think, but we've got to make sure that we take the first steps to start that process. And I think this is one of the first steps in rebuilding that roadway. That's going to be very important to our city. I still believe in my heart that high road should come from Highway 21 to I-35 as a three-lane road, something that I've been preaching heavily on, and I think that's going to come to fruition one day as well. But we've got to start in certain areas and making sure that we have other connecting roadways because we just don't need north-south roadways, we need east-west as well to get the connectivity, the traffic flowing, making people's commutes, you know, 15 minutes instead of 30 minutes is important. So I think this is a good start for it.
And if I may, Councilmember Floris Cale, just to address your question about roadway standards, we're not deviating from, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, we're not deviating from any of the city's roadway standards within the development. So if there's a, for instance, if there's a 28-foot right-of-way curb, well, not, sorry, not right-of-way, curb-to-curb dimension, then you're, currently, the city wouldn't allow us to park on both sides of the street, and that's typically kind of the issue with those more narrow roadways such as in Plum Creek, where it ends up being a one-way road essentially, right, where you have to wait till somebody else can pass by. So we're not, you know, we're not planning on or we're not asking to deviate from any of those standards.
I totally understand that. And with that said, I feel like our standards are pretty low. So I totally understand that the developers are going to use that and I can respect that. But I just feel like, what I originally felt about it was like, wow, this is like, going to be great and spacious and, and so now, the more and more I've seen it, I'm like, okay, I get that we want a density, but wow, this is a lot different than I felt like I, what I originally felt like it was going to be. So again, I do appreciate you using the city's standards, but sometimes I wish that developers didn't necessarily just set our standards as theirs and they made their standards a little bit better.
Understood. And I think within this document, we're simply trying to create the kind of framework, right? When we move into the actual construction planning process with your, with your Streets Department, your Transportation Department, and Leon and his team, you know, we can have those discussions about the appropriate widths of the roadways throughout the development.
Okay, and then one more, I guess one more question. This is just curiosity, this is not for anything that I want to take into consideration when I vote, but you guys talked about different phases in your, in your development, and are you, is the plan still to bring the brewery and restaurant first?
As fast as I possibly can, and I'd love to talk to you guys about, you know, sort of fast-tracking that with the recent news for the people that we hope will bring there.
The Texas Monthly News?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Councilmember Ellison.
Yes, thank you. And I certainly appreciate the discussion, I appreciate the concerns that have been levied by our colleagues here. But I guess I'm a little confused because this is a large part of why we're bringing this 2022 road bond forward, is to address the issues that have been expressed tonight as far as the ones expressed on the roadways. For me, I guess, I largely agree with what the mayor said earlier, but I would say regardless of this development or not, I'd still encourage the council to move forward with pursuing the road bonds for next year to improve the roads. Because to your point, Councilmember Tobias, those residents that are there currently still deserve that opportunity to have their road reconstruction. I agree with what the mayor said, though, there was no contribution largely by those older subdivisions because those, they weren't held to the standard that we, this council and this administration led by Scott have been doing. And so I think that's a large part of what's so different about what we're doing now is we are holding them to account to help us. Now, they're not going to, no subdivision along that road is going to reconstruct Bunton, of course, but they will pay adjacent lane mile fees, they'll pay all the fees that we require to help us get to that funding source to ultimately reconstruct and improve these roads, the completed streets that we have as that standard. So for me, this is, this is a part of it. And so I guess if, if the idea is to reject this project because we don't have the 2022 road bond passed, and when you're talking to those residents, I would encourage them to keep an eye out for that because this is how we construct roads and get to the improvement that they want to see. I know we see it all the time with residents, you know, we put up a sign on the Berlison Roundabout, it's like, why do you use that money to build a road or repair a road? The money just, it doesn't, it's not the same there. We, it is very expensive to reconstruct roads, even before the pandemic, and now they're even more expensive. So this is that, that part of helping us get there is those funding sources. So what we've been talking about earlier in the meeting has a direct impact to what these, these other subdivisions that are coming in. So that's why I'm supportive of this and having a project like Rastagar that is willing to step up and help us even beyond, in meeting our expectations and having this dialogue with us, a back and forth to go above the bar that we have set as the city. I agree with you, Councilmember Floris Cale, that's what we've always seen, is that where you place the bar, that's where they will go. And so I don't really know if I want to hold them responsible for meeting our standards, maybe we should definitely improve our standards. But for me, I think that they've shown good faith in coming with us to work on these different things. I certainly understand that the narrow street concern that you made earlier, definitely legitimate concern, and those are things that are identified in our code as well. But for me, it is about all these steps putting together. And I guess when those residents are concerned and expressing their concerns, their very legitimate concerns to us about improving the road, why not improve the road? We could do that, pass the bond next year, improve the road, and not do these projects, but it's still, it's all a part of helping that come together and helping us do these things in which we all agree that we want to do and are long overdue, as we probably all agree on that. But, so for me, I think these things kind of go hand in hand. Certainly, if there are other things that, you know, we want to try and work with this developer on, I'm open to that, but I think, you know, we've, that's what we've had this dialogue and open discussion for these last several weeks to identify those things to see if they could work with us.
Councilmember Rizzo.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item number 14.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by Mayor Protim Coach. Is there a discussion on the motion? Councilmember Floris Cale.
Thank you. Okay, I, I'm just going to ask that you keep that, like, passion and love for that area like you did, and I'm not saying, I just, I just feel like I see that less and it's more about rules and regulations, and I understand that and I can respect that. But when, when we went out there with you, I just saw like, how you like fell in love with it and it was, it was a different feeling than I get right now. So I hope that you, and I know, I'm sure it's a stressful process, I understand, but our residents deserved that same kind of passion that you had in the beginning that you did now. And if at any time you feel like the city is being unfair, I'm going to ask that you come to a city council meeting or you reach out to us and we can work on it because we are a voice of seven. And so my request is that we don't just focus on, you know, trying to appease certain people, but for everybody in general. So, and then that would be my ask. This is our area, this is, you know, me and Tobias's area, and it's super special to us. So I just ask that you just kind of keep that same passion and fire that you had in the beginning.
Absolutely. Sometimes going through sort of legal-esque documents doesn't exactly bring the passion out of the subject, but, you know, we have a, we've got a decent road ahead of us, you know, a long road ahead of us, where we're going to be working with you guys to make sure that this happens in the right way. So we're not done yet, this is just the framework. Excited to kind of bring this, hopefully, to, this vision to reality for everybody.
This is definitely a project that I'm looking forward to on these sites, setting the standards, the bar high for other developers, and you're showing that it can happen, and I'm looking forward to seeing this project done and see, telling every other developer comes in, see, you can put something in this area that meets a higher standard. So I appreciate your whole project coming forward to the area, and it's going to bring some amenities to that area as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one. All right, next up, agenda item number 15, accept the withdrawal of the petition for annexation of 37.99 acres, more or less. Mr. Atkinson.
Will Atkinson, for the record, city planner. Before you, we have the request from the Caraway property owners to withdraw their annexation, and it requires council action. We're going back to the drawing board to try to figure out what's exactly appropriate for the site, and they have asked to re-withdraw their request.
Any questions? Motion?
I'm sorry, I got lost on what I.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Motion to approve the item to accept the withdrawal petition.
Moved by Councilmember Ellison, seconded by Councilmember Floris Cale. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Next up, agenda item number 16, second reading, an ordinance of the City of Coll, Texas annexing 2.548 acres of land located at 4750 Dacey Lane. This is second reading, Mr. Atkinson.
As you stated, sir, it's a second read for the annexation along Dacey Lane, and this is to allow us to be able to enter into development agreements later on in the future that will allow us to eventually be able to annex them as well as a voluntary basis.
All right, any questions, comments? Motion?
Mayor, motion to approve item, agenda item number 16 as written.
Second, it's moved by Councilmember Rizzo, seconded by the mayor. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five to one. All right, next up, agenda item number 18, consideration of possible action to update the stormwater regulations ordinance to include more stringent requirements for construction, for construction, concrete washout pits. Councilmember Floris Cale.
Thank you. I want to start by prefacing that this is not going to be, I'm not trying to be more stringent. Currently, our city ordinance does call for some kind of washout, but when I got together with Kathy, we discussed things that the city could do to kind of make it easier for developers. I'm a big firm believer in you leave places better than you found them. So what I, what I'm trying to do is have our developers understand what our expectation is when it comes to unused concrete. And so if Ms. Kathy, I think she was online, is available, she can discuss the attachment? There she is.
Hi, Mayor. Councilmembers Kathy Raker, for the record. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, after some discussion with Councilmember Flores-Kale, we were discussing, you know, throughout the city, if you drive around the construction sites, all of these construction sites are required to have a concrete washout pit. And if you drive around the city, they, a lot of different companies install them in different ways. And so instead of trying to update the ordinance and put something in writing, we came to the conclusion that it might be a better idea to come up with a standard detail where we, the city can recommend a prefab concrete washout pit. There's several companies in the area that are actually local that provide services where they can come and drop a container, and those are maintained by a company. But we can also, you know, we would just recommend that as a city. And if they don't want to go with a prefab concrete washout, then we would provide them with a standard detail which would standardize what we see throughout the city. And what that would do is actually just make it a little bit more protective of the environment. You know, it would, it would beef it up just a hair. Again, concrete washouts are required, not only just through City of Kyle ordinances, but also through the state construction general permit. So we're not, we're not asking them to do anything different than what they're required to do. We're just going to standardize what we want to see in Kyle, which would actually be a little bit more protective than what we currently see. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I didn't know. Are you finished, Councilmember Flores-Kale? You want me to open it up to questions, comments?
Yes, please.
All right. Comments, questions? Councilor Rizzo.
Yeah, Kathy, I guess my first question is, is it, because we're looking at something that's more aesthetically pleasing when we get out there, and more, I guess, more environmental-friendly. But is aesthetics a component of this as well?
No, not really. I mean, if you look at most construction, it's actually not a pretty process in general. Really, it is standardizing, you know, the protection of, because some of the concrete washouts, they go out, they'll drive wooden stakes in the ground, and then they'll frame boards around those wooden stakes, and then they'll put a plastic liner. You know, those can get punctured more easily. It truly is more for protection of the environment. There's, there's just, you know, several ways that you can install concrete washout pits. And so I wouldn't say that it's for aesthetics, really, because either way, concrete and washout pits are, are not really pretty or appealing. But it would be more protect, it would be more protective at the end. Yeah.
Of the washout.
That's what, that's what we're, yeah, that's what we're going for, is more protection of the environment.
Okay. And what, what kind of action are you looking for most as a council today?
In the backup material, we provided it, provided a sample standard detail that we would actually change. That was just one that I saw that I did like. We could also, you know, take the one that the City of Austin has, you know, and just add a little bit to it. But really, I think it, what we're really wanting to accomplish would be easiest to accomplish by using a standard detail. And then during plan reviews, I would make sure that the new standard detail is included in all plan sets, and that the contractors are aware of this, of a newer requirement, that they can't just go out there and form it up with, with wood and wooden stakes. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Councilor Ellison.
Yes, and if we took this action to incorporate this new standard detail, which I actually, I think I'm in favor of this. So when, who would be the, what would be the trigger for the first projects that would have to be held to this new standard? Because obviously, ones that are already in the process wouldn't. So what would be the, the first trigger for the new standard detail?
I would say it's the plans that are starting to come in. As we have new plan sets come in, I would require the new standard detail. So that's where it would trigger.
Okay. So plans that have not been submitted yet whatsoever, essentially?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, this is not something that's new. They are already required to have a concrete washout. And in reality, it's not, it wouldn't even be a much bigger cost. It might be a little bit more costly, but it would be minimal at best.
So you're in favor of this, this draft sample you, you put in our backup material? You think that's sufficient to accomplish the goal?
I do. I think I would take the City of Austin standard detail and merge some of the details in that. And a lot of it has to do, just even with language, the fact that, you know, we would state in there that we recommend prefab containers. But again, it would just be a recommendation. It would not be enforced. And then also to posting a sign near the concrete washout. That's not something that's currently required. And then I did see some of the City of Austin language as well. So I think I would kind of merge the two. But in reality, it would not change what the contractors are already doing.
Gotcha. So would it be possible, the next step here, to direct staff to come back with an ordinance with y'all's recommendations that include not only this draft sample that you all put, but any other recommendations from other jurisdictions that y'all might find prudent to have with ours?
I think that if we were directed to create a standard detail, I don't see us needing to change, change an ordinance for this. We would just need to create a new standard detail.
Kathy, I think what Councilmember Ellison is trying to ask is, is what you put in the backup good enough for us to vote on now? Or do you need, or are you asking to bring this back again with changes? Because you're talking about merging documents.
I guess at this point, we're wanting to know if council is interested in us bringing back a standard detail.
I support it. I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to bring back standard detail in, as we've discussed. Moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Flores-Kale. Is there a discussion on that motion?
I'm in favor of that. And the reason I just asked about the ordinance, because it does, in the agenda item, say to update the stormwater regulations ordinance. So I was just curious if we would need to approve new language. But I'm all for this idea, however we need to complete it.
And I apologize for that. We actually had a later meeting on a Friday, and so I was unable to update that verbiage when we decided it would be better accomplished through a standard detail. So my apologies for that. It was just the, the timing of the meeting and everything, so.
That's okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. Next up, Agenda Item Number 19, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding the City of Kyle's Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you very much. So my original verbiage was, was going to be to begin the process to select a consultant for the development of the comprehensive plan. So I'm not, I'm not really sure what the discussion is about. I think as a council, we have all discussed our opinions regarding the comprehensive plan and the importance of, and the importance of not, like, making sure that that's, it's a final say-all. So it's just my hope that, starting today, we can start discussing the process of selecting a consultant, so we can get started on the development plan, I mean, on the, on the development of the comprehensive plan.
So my only question to that is, the city manager said he wanted to start, it's in the budget. So the city manager said he wanted to start that process after we hire the new planning director, as far as, so the new planning director, who will have to work on that? Are you, are you saying you want to start that process before?
Well, I just feel like the process is, is going to be really long. So, and I think regardless of when we hire, hopefully, it's not going to be, you know, much longer. But they're going to be new anyways. And so I don't think there's any harm in looking for consultants to, to begin.
Scott, do you have a thought on that?
Mayor Council, Scott, for the record. My only thought is, as we put out like an RFP or RFI for, for this firm, that the development of that document, we had done one a year ago, but with a new planning director, there may be a different way to, to format that document. There may be some different vision elements that we want to see in there. We may want to come back to council and have a discussion on what that document contained and what we might want to put together. And I'd like the planning director to, to lead that with council. So my, my thought would be to have the planning director here in place. Also, the new assistant city manager would oversee that position also. So I kind of want them to take more ownership in the full process, rather than come in in the middle of it.
Do you think you could send us some kind of timeline for, because obviously, we're looking to hire an ACM now.
Correct.
When, when the planning director, you're expecting to hire, and then also what the, when you're expecting, as it relates to your timeline for the comprehensive plan to kind of, like, because we, I think everybody's kind of not sure what that means. And since the comprehensive plan has been in two budgets, or three budgets now, there's obviously consternation about whether or not this is actually going to go forward. So that might be an important part of, like, we're going to, it's going to be this month, and this month is when we're hiring this, you know, some kind of schedule and a plan for starting. That would be my thoughts for it. But Councilor Rizzo.
Kind of led into what I was going to ask is, when are we thinking about hiring a planning director? One reason is that our growth isn't stopping, and I feel like we've kind of dragged this on a little bit. So I kind of feel like we need to really, we, we don't want to settle. I know we're looking for a good planning director that's going to help the city grow in a positive way. But I think we need to really make it a priority, because I think that we're kind of, I don't know what the word is I'm looking for, but it feels like we're kind of stagnant right now. I think we need to keep moving forward as a city. And having that planning director in place with a clear direction is, is very vital in our growth.
Councilmember, I plan on posting that position tomorrow. And the reason why it has languished just for a little while, it hasn't been too long, is because I wanted to get the assistant city manager position taken care of first, since that is over at Development Services. So it will, you know, oversee this new planning director, director position. So I would like to have input from that selected candidate into the posting process of the planning director, and then have them be part of the selection of that position.
Thank you, Scott.
You bet.
All right. Other comments?
I'm thinking, can we just say, hey, like, January, we can start it? I mean, I think January is, is a good timeframe. And, and I keep hearing, like, oh, we did, we did a, an amendment in 2019. And so I went online and I looked up all the amendments that we had. And yes, we've had, you know, it looks like a couple in 2017 and one in 2019. But, you know, there are six plan elements to this comprehensive plan, and as a whole, it's never been updated since 2010. Now, there's been bits and pieces that have been updated. But I think that's kind of cheating the, the kind of beauty in, in the comprehensive plan, where we could just create a whole new one that has everything updated. So I'd like to see something like, if we could have a date, like, January, or?
Yeah. Councilmember, I think that's, that's probably the right month. Once we get the planning director on board, we take a look at the plan. We come back to council for one last round before we issue the, the request for proposal. Then January would be the time that we would make that, you know, send that out, probably wait, you know, eight weeks to get proposals back in, make a selection. So April timeframe is probably the rough date, I would think, to bring forward a final candidate for council selection.
So it looks like in January, it's January 4th is going to be our first Tuesday, and the 18th is going to be the second. So I would like to make a motion to bring this item back January 4th, 2022, to, to begin the process to select a consultant for the development of the comprehensive plan.
Do we need to make a motion, or just give direction?
Direction's fine. But we'll, we'll put that on the calendar for the fourth.
Are you here with that, Councilmember?
She just wants, she wants a vote on it, right?
Yes, please. Can we do that?
Second. Motion by Councilmember Flores-Kale, seconded by the mayor, to bring this item back January 4th, first meeting in January. Is there a discussion on that action? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries six to zero. Next up, executive session. We still have two items, or three?
Two.
Two items.
Read that.
Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics, pending or contemplated litigation, or to seek the advice of the city attorney pursuant to Section 551.071, public safety center and procurement process.
Be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.